So, special meeting is go ahead and call it order. And, uh... We'll, uh... Yeah, let's go ahead and say our pledge of allegiance, stand and say our pledge of allegiance. Which fighter we gonna look at? Alright. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. To the Father, who has sent us here, who is with us, who is faithful, who is faithful to us, who is just for all. They help you all too?
We have to. Father, Lord, we come before you today, we thank you so much for this wonderful day. But allow us to be in a living country where we're free to congregate. When assets of mind, the knowledge and the wisdom makes the right decisions that affect us from this district, in West, and thus upon this county, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Alright. Ms. Connie, if you don't care to call it order.
Okay. Amy Warren.
Here.
J L Bowen.
Yo.
Dennis Cole.
Here.
Mike Hawker. Ron McKee.
Here.
Chad Patton.
Here.
Alright, that shows that we've got a form, we've got enough of form. Yeah, I need to silence my phone real quick. But I'm gonna take, yahoo, take this one off.
They didn't like your wife calling you.
Huh?
It's your wife calling you.
Yeah, yeah.
Where you at?
Michigan. Okay. Stand for.
That goes off when she puts them two in the yard, huh?
Yeah, yeah. That's my warning, warning device. Warning, warning, danger, Will Robinson.
I ain't doing nothing.
Alright, um, so the special meeting, today's special meeting is called eight thirty here at the Powell County E O C. And first thing on the, is a motion to approve bill submitted for payment. Any questions on the bills?
I understand, Lord.
Okay.
Jail, the loans, that's what I'm talking about, the loans. People, Terry.
Well, um...
You can wait until the loan's like everything.
Yeah. Well, on that, I don't know which part that is.
Just for you.
But, uh, I've got a question on, on one of the, is that including the bathroom stuff? Well, they, they paid six hundred dollars for vanity. And, uh, they bought a commode. What is?
I don't know if they actually thought that.
Okay, well.
Or not that, that, or that was a joke or anything.
I hope it was a joke. One of the bad, bad modes that, uh, only sprays water up.
Washing it.
Yeah.
A good day?
Yeah, that's it, that's it. But, uh, yeah, that, that is, uh, I have no idea.
Okay.
But that is for, they were redoing a bathroom over there for the SAP employees. Anything else you wanna look at?
Also, I gave you all this, uh, I had, uh, for the arraignment, jail arraignment equipment. I sent all the paperwork in to D O G and we're supposed to get the money to pay for this, but they're asking for payment, so I don't know to wait till. Anyway, if I can get approval to go ahead and pay this, and then we should get the money from D O G. It totals like ninety-nine thousand dollars. Um, it was back in, um, July of twenty thirty. I, I had no clue of it, um, but you all can see what odds for. It's like phase one and two. Anyway, I listened to that budget meeting, they talked about this, and I already have, and I received the paperwork and got it sent in back to D O G, so.
And it's supposed to be through the grant that, uh, is gonna pay for this.
Anyway, if you all just something include this with the bills, or you all can do a separate motion, whatever you wanna do.
But one of, one of my main things on, on stuff like this, you know, that, uh, I got an email back in June, July, uh, on this, and nobody ever presented to us. And that's about, about, you know, going ahead and, and okaying it, so.
And this for grant would be included in the grant, any of the proposal?
No, this, this was, this was, uh, done, they went ahead and got it, and...
I presented all the paperwork to you all last month.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is, this is last month, but back in July, they, they didn't say anything to anybody about it. We found out about what, two, about two months ago. And so, you know, uh, we, we have to communicate a little bit more.
Where'd the money come from?
It's from, I had to send the paperwork to D O G, so it's a grant that you're working on, Aaron Johnson, this is the one, so I sent the paperwork to you. So, ninety-nine thousand.
Hopefully we get reimbursed.
So, they, I mean, the grant, they put it for the grant last summer, then?
No, they didn't put the grant in. They went ahead and got all the stuff.
Yeah.
And then, then, we didn't, we didn't get the grant until two months ago.
I just put the paperwork through it.
Yeah. You know, we'll talk about that. Motion made by Chad. Second by Dennis, all in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed likewise? Motion carries. Next is a motion to approve, uh, Land Pride Bush Hall for road department. And this is something that he did bring up, uh, four, five, six months ago. That, uh, he'd asked us and, and, uh, we were going to prove it, but, uh, we never did get it, and then one day we just landed up in the road department's driveway, and he's like, oh, okay, I forgot all about that. But, but that's what this is, is not another Bush Hall, this one is approved back about six months ago. So, I needed a motion to, I guess, uh, approve this, approve it and pay for it. Okay, motion made by Brian, seconded by Chad, all in favor, seconded by saying aye. Anybody opposed likewise? Alright, motion carries. Oh, next one, next is very important, alright. Motion to approve, uh, twenty point four incentive pay for me, uh, per K R S sixty-four for five-two-seven-five, subjects of six. That's just a basic forty hours we get for training and stuff. And this is, this is paid out by the state, they reimburse us, correct, Connie?
I'm late in motion, you gotta sell mine that hard, dude.
Okay, I will, I will. Motion by Chad. Second, second by Dennis, thank you Dennis, I appreciate you coming through. All in favor, seconded by saying aye. Anybody opposed likewise?
I gotta speak for ours.
Next is, is motion to approve, uh, twenty twenty-four incentive pay for the, uh, wonderful and awesome greatness of Chad Patton. Uh, Chad has worked hard for himself.
Solid move.
Alright, motion made by J L. Thank you, J L, seconded by Brian. Thank you, Brian.
For everyone in the nation's country, seconded by...
All in favor, seconded by saying aye. I did too, I did too. I'm with you, buddy, I got your back.
Thank you.
Anybody in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed likewise? Okay, I'm a rough bunch this morning.
Two, three, four meetings.
Yeah, my third one.
Uh, next is, is, uh, D M S.
That's you. We discussed some stuff that we need to get surplus in the old building. We're gonna try and sell it for cash and put that money back and buy like new dishes and stuff like that when we get our building. I've got a list of, a few things, we've got serial number and all that. Just like the hot water heaters, they're not very old, the A C units and stuff that we've got in windows, one of them we bought last year, five hundred dollars. Surely we can get something out of it. Stuff like that is not a big deal. How much? That's the best offer I've had today. But just need to get approval to surplus, a few things.
What's the list of stuff that you have?
Uh, there's a cage that came in the Tahoe. It won't fit anything else in the county. I don't think the jails got it.
It's a petition barrier, uh, for prisoners.
What is?
Petition barrier, cage.
Come out of Tahoe.
Oh, don't forget Tahoe.
Well, it has to be a twenty because they changed them then.
Twenty-one. We take a twenty. One of the bankers, they're taking a twenty anymore now.
But, uh, three hot water heaters and, uh, three A C units.
We do need a hot water heater. Is it a good working hot water heater?
It's working right now, it's all I can...
We do need one. Okay. We need one up to our six.
Rip it out today.
Well, no, we're not ripping it out till tomorrow, wait till tomorrow.
Okay, I can bring a wrecking crew over and have it out in about five minutes.
I make a motion like the, uh, air conditioners, put them in surplus in case we get in a situation that homeless shelter, somebody may need them this summer.
Just to version seven?
Yeah, because you don't believe much out of them, but they may come and reset them.
There goes my twenty-five dollar air conditioner.
No.
I agree on that.
Because you always, there's always a need for that.
Well, yeah, and you're, you're right, if it, if it starts getting hot or something, you know, especially elderly people that, uh, don't have air conditioning stuff, you know, we can, we can let them use it first and not donate it, but, uh, you know, have it there for use.
I agree. The minister, what are we gonna do to say, I know he said good for... We still have some options, say, and go buy one.
I agree. Still have motion to accept the rest of items up for surplus. The motion made by...
Dennis.
I'll say.
Seconded by Chad, all in favor, seconded by saying aye. Anybody opposed likewise? Eddie, sitting, anything else about, uh, starting?
Uh, I told the builder we would be up, uh, the first, which is tomorrow. And he could have it a week after that. Because we, we're wanting to do fire training in the building, search and rescue and all that good stuff in the building before they demolish it. So, hopefully next week or two, it'll be on the ground.
Yeah, we're still waiting on design on it also.
We're waiting on design on it.
Ain't proved the construction until we see what the design is.
And, uh, also I'd need a, I guess I need a approval to probably get a cell phone for a transfer after hours.
Of course.
Me and Eddie talked about putting Arlene in the old fiscal court meeting room, and then I'm gonna go over to the firehouse and set my office up somewhere. We're probably gonna need to get a cell phone to, for transfer line after hours and stuff.
Did you check with Jason about the...
He said you can't get faxes or, he said you can't have any lines. He said it's just, that's basically, he says like forty bucks a year is what he pays for that. He said it's just as minimum as you could possibly get.
One of the things Larry just brought up, uh, before the meeting started, is, uh, you know, possibly have Arlene come up here and, you know, utilize his office also, you know...
She'll have her own key, there's only two keys to it, she'll have her own key, her own pop pad, and she's got a fax there, she, she needs that, she's got it, and if it's something she'd like to do.
I'll get her to.
And if need be, if we, if we can't arrange something like that, you know, maybe we can, we can contact everybody as far as, uh, your hospitals and stuff, because after hours, you know, we just happen to call dispatch and have them to, to tone them out or something. If they can tone them out. Then if there's a problem, you know, then they, they can dispatch and contact you and see if you can work out the transfer or something.
I think that's about all I got.
Um, next thing is discussion of the twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty-five jail budget. Oh, boy.
That's the thing.
So, where's y'all's?
Well, some light item just really over this fiscal year, what I'm planning for was deputy salary. We're still sending over the thirteen-seven, I think we're behind one month. We was wanting to make sure we get, uh, a hundred and sixty-four sent over, the vote actually says a hundred thousand, but we was wanting to take it up a little bit, just get a little bit more over there. But we're going, it looks like projected, we're gonna be able to about four hundred thousand at the end of the year, on jail salary. Just for what I come with, up with from average. Now, last week, we had a layoff. Called four people and, uh, let out four individuals. Two of them was full-time, two was part-time. The savings on that, combined with, we got two that's quit. We got one that's put in, he's noticed, that's, uh, his last days will be March eighth. That's Justin Perry. And Josh Pilfer, he's actually, uh, applied for a couple of police departments. So, he is gonna leave, uh, just a matter of wondering when he calls, he's certified, so I couldn't imagine the police department not wanting to take him. Uh, he's a good guy, got a good work ethic, and so. But at the end of all of them, it'd be a total of, uh, just in salary itself, they don't include, uh, retirement or, or, uh, social security. It's a hundred and thirty-nine, five fifteen.
That's good.
A year, a year. So far, that's, that's the only thing we've got, uh, set in stone, to knock down the, um, the paywall. We've discussed, uh, twelve-hour shifts and stuff like that, but we've not made a, a commitment of where we're gonna do that or not.
I don't know about a twelve-hour shift, it, it would save quite a bit of money, uh, as far as reduction of, of employees and also, um, your benefits, insurance and retirement. You know, because right now, the retirement's twenty-three, around twenty-three, uh, percent a month, or, uh, yeah, so.
Go ahead.
You know, it's, it's, uh...
Twenty-three percent of the salary.
Yeah. Say a hundred and thirty-nine grand.
Yep.
Yeah, so, you know, and that's, that's gonna say...
Part-time inmates.
Well, as, as far as, yeah, your full-time people will get your benefits, but part-time don't. So, whatever the full-time salary is, 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 you know, we'll be saving an extra twenty-three percent just on, on, uh, retirement. That's not including their insurance and, and, uh, stuff like that, so. That's, that's, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a big deal.
So, if we did do, and I don't want to make some claims or anything.
Yeah.
But if we did, um, go to twelve-hour shifts, um, we wouldn't benefit nothing out of retirement or the insurance, because it would be part-time people. That would initially be, and there's about, uh, about five of them.
And I hate, I hate seeing anybody lose their job.
I do too.
It's nearly healed me.
It made me sick.
To have to do this.
Have to do it. That's on the, on the jail salary. We got, we had an audit on our M R T program, uh, and what they do is they come in and make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be, uh, program. We added, I know we talked about it, uh, last year, we added, uh, four more classes to where we can get more of a state inmate draw. And what that has done, we was projected on them payments to be, uh, about two, two-hundred-and-twenty-five this year, it's already two-twenty-five.
Good.
So, uh, it's, it's bringing in a lot more revenue than we thought it was going to. It's, it's actually up, our contract with other counties, we've, we're at a hundred-and-ninety-seven percent of this, so we've doubled, we've doubled what we said we was gonna collect from other counties, that's just housing for Minnafield County and a couple others as needed. Would not sign no contracts with them, uh, just because if the state inmate population gets too much, we would rather have them than we would the contracted counties. We'll make a little bit more of what we'll be charging on the counties, but with the state, the ones that go through SAP and everything, we actually get a thousand dollars every time when they graduate, so. And we can put them through M R T, all the M R T classes, parenting, anger management, plural, everything. So, we get money for each one of them.
Good. Did you help work anything out, Estrel County, your...
I called and talked to the judge, and he was, uh, on the road, said he didn't have good signal, he's gonna call me back. I never did. I haven't been back from him.
I'll call him, Dennis.
I believe that's about it on the, uh, on the budget itself. Of course, we would have to call me and sit down and go over.
Probably, probably within the next week, we need to, need to do that, because it has to be finished by April.
Two-year long. You got a road frame for anything, just two-year long?
I've got, um, I've got printout here to give everybody, I can go out after the meeting, just for you to look at and think about.
So, what are y'all, you got SAP, M R T?
So, so, we got SAP and M R T, of course, they do portals, there's anger management, there's parenting, uh, there's making good, staying quit. We're still doing G E D or? We are.
Is there anything else we can get to off, I mean, I mean, you said the pole is getting...
Well, with, with that being said, we have more room to teach classes. So, we're having to use a space as we can. We've got SAP counselors that stay in after SAP to do the M R T classes.
What is M R T?
It's moral recognition, uh, therapy. There's a lot of different hats under M R T, the anger management's under M R T, they have M R T and M R T mentor. Then, once you get the M R T training and certification, then you can go and get training on all the others. You pay one fee and get them certified, and once they're certified, then you can teach X amount of classes. But if you don't teach this class for thirty days, they pull it from you and you can't teach it. So, what we're doing right now, and it's, it's fixing to catch up with us, we'll have this class, then we'll have this class, then we'll have this class, and we're keeping them from pulling from us, because we don't have a classroom. We've got one, but it's a property room now. You know, they may have the property room whenever we built on, because we had three-hundred inmates and that's one place to put their property.
Oh, you were talking about building a...
We, we are, we're actually, uh, waiting to see if this, uh, follows with the state till we can, uh, build it. It's, it costs about thirty-five thousand dollars to build it. M R T's making about eighteen to twenty-six a month, so it will pay for itself. We also talked about doing the, uh, doing the commissary, talked about renting a building and just paying for the commissary, because there is for inmate welfare and inmate training. But, uh, if this comes through, then we'll, we'll be in good shape where we can get it built, have it set up, and then start churn revenue out of it.
Good.
And a body scanner is also on that, you know, also, if we can, of course, we're just waiting on Frankford to close their meeting now.
So, what's the population over right now?
Right at two forty-three, something like that. About a hundred and seventy-two state inmates. For us to hit the, uh, we, we wanna make two hundred thousand a month off of state. For us to hit that in February, we'd have had to maintain a hundred and ninety-five state inmates for the month. Next month, we'll have to maintain a hundred and eighty-six, or there's thirty-one days. We're a hundred and seventy-two right now. We're going after one today, we've got, uh, three we're going after tomorrow. And SAP's what's bringing them in. Every county out there is, is, I don't even know if they have those one state inmates, nobody's got any.
I'm in a group chat with a bunch of jailers, and they're always begging them.
But, but, well, we've got a benefit, we've got a hundred-man SAPs that we, we've sent Frankford to this, but we got thirty beds open. If these people signed up for SAP and can't deny, they have to send them to you, which, I mean, I hate that for the jails, but happening is my problem.
We've been tossing around the idea of a female SAP program, because that would, that's a big draw, there's not many programs in the state, not many jails in the state that offer a female SAP program. And, uh, I think we could do good with it if we, we could make room for them.
I was about to start to ask, do you have any rooms that you can, you can make for the females?
Initially looking at it, we had room for eighteen. Uh, we cleared out, uh, two cells in the very back. Each one has to have a bed, nobody can be on the floor. And the size of the cells, you know, you'd have to have one, it's got about a, we got, uh, used to be SAP back there in the back hallway, I don't think y'all lived back there in the back of the old SAP place. So, there's two cells back there, and it's got a, a vegetable between them. And one, one of them's got ten beds in it, one of them's got eight beds in it. Right now, we've got about twelve people in one and about ten in another, and there's some people on the floor. And we would have to find a place to put them to make room, just females. And you'd have the females and males back there in the same hallway, they couldn't see each other, but that leaves you to hold other bunch of problems.
So, on our, on our programs, all the, all the programs, what are you bringing in as far as months or a day? Just, I know it's, it's hard to say right now.
Probably just about three hundred thousand, somewhere around there, maybe probably more than that, because they get, we get the money from, um, a grant for it also, that drug rehabilitation program grant. I think it's what, three-ten?
Three-ten, sure.
Three-ten, I think, is that what it is, Connie? So, you get three-ten for that, plus if you get, you know, we're probably at the two-forty, two-fifty on the, uh, the H B five fifty-six, which got the M R T classes in, so you're probably looking at five hundred thousand right there, you know?
And that, that's just on that one program, right?
That's just on the state inmates. That's not just one program, that's the state inmates.
That's everything.
That's the SAP, that's the, uh, plus, you know, along with that, you've got, um, you have some phones. So, you know, we get the, the phone comes, uh, commissary comes over here. You can get the cell commissary off, uh, you, you know, of course, along with that comes more expenses too. There's a couple of, uh, house bills that's up here in Frankford, that's not our friend right now. One of them's about, uh, what they're gonna pay, uh, per inmate, state inmate, there's a bill about, about, to where they're wanting to make it to where it's just a five percent over what your cost is per inmate. And I've not sat down and figured out exactly what, including state, it would be per inmate. But we get paid thirty-five, thirty-four per state inmate right now.
Me and the other jailers are talking to our legislators, trying to get them to vote against that. So, hopefully that'll happen.
So, your overall budget for everything is, is how much?
Well, now, if you figure out for the month, uh, or for the year to date.
Year, yeah.
That's what the transfer, we're actually, oh, I mean, we're actually a hundred budget.
On the total budget, what is, how much is it, Connie, on the total?
Uh, five hundred and twenty-eight, three, two seventy-eight. Well, the retail rate is three million, five twenty-four.
And so, that, you know, because I, I know people, people that are just gonna be reviewing the, the video and stuff, they're, they're thinking, well, you know, that's, and it is good money coming in, but when we look at the overall budget, you know...
Well, if you look at the bottom line on end of February, with the revenue and expense that's actually showing on the printout, you're showing a revenue of, uh, two million nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight four oh three twelve. And you've got an expense of two million eight hundred four fifty-three eighty-eight. That's, that's what's showing on paper. Where we have to do the transfer on the, um, payment comes out of here.
Yeah, and that's worth some thousand dollars.
Yeah. But that's actually included in here on that too.
And the thing about it is, you know, the jail's not there to make money.
And they're, they're not designed to make money, but we tried to make it as less, you know, I'd like to see it be a revenue turn for, uh, the county.
Yeah.
Statewide, jails are meant to be a burden on the counties, and we're, we're building everything we can to keep from that.
And we appreciate that, y'all are doing it.
I wanted to make money, I don't...
So, I talked to a guy that, that knows all the finances, every county government in state. And he, and he, word for word, said, every jail in the state wants to be in your all situation. He said, uh, they'll follow them, he said, every jail in the state wants to be in our situation, so they're really struggling bad right now.
Oh, yeah.
I talked to one the other day that, well, our neighbors, and I ain't gonna say which ones, uh, very close to us are losing M H right and left, and it's because of, I guess, management, um, they're getting... They're getting shipped to other counties, and the D O C's not doing it. We're not having that done. None of ours is getting pulled out and sent to other counties. What ours is getting is either released or they're sent to the roller farm for classification. We've had two that's called wanting to come back to our facility, and if they request to come back to our facility, we're allowed to go get them. At the roller farm. We had one guy that, he was a great guy and there was a problem, and he's a state inmate. We went and got him yesterday, day four yesterday.
In Mary County.
Yeah, Mary County. And, you know, it's, we're, we're really in a good position as far as detention centers, but we're in, you know, it's a rough spot right now just because of the way, the way it is, the way the economy is, the way the corrections industry is right now.
I know, every, every meeting, literally, every meeting that I go to, you know, that's, that's the main topic, is, is the jails.
Yeah, because they, they are, I mean, they're your biggest expense for a county government. We've been pretty fortunate, extremely fortunate, but it's, you know.
I know, one of the, one of the problems that, that I hear is, is, I guess, lack of, of, uh, uh, slow to move them from a county inmate to state inmate.
That is a big problem.
I joked with our Commonwealth attorney the other day and told her, appreciate if y'all get some trials going so we can get some convictions and sentences and.
Well, the doc, the doc is supposed to help that?
Yeah, it, it actually, actually, it, it has helped some. But, you know, eliminating the, the wait and all that, you know, there, there's people in there I know that's probably a year.
Well, we got one in there that's been there three years.
That's, that's waiting on a trial and, and, you know, it's costing the, the county.
Yeah, and, and the Commonwealth attorney does all they can.
Oh, yeah, they do, yeah.
They do a wonderful job.
And not throwing anything off on, on our judicial system, you know, it's, it's a hatred.
It's just the way the wheels of justice turn, nothing to be done about.
It's just the nature of the way it is. And, you know, again, with the one he was talking about, it's been there for three years, they got two hundred thousand dollars medical on them too. So, um, most of them see jail like free healthcare. But what we have gotten back is, you know, we, we charge copays now. We finally could legally do it to every inmate, not just county, but we did it state and everybody.
And when they're booked in now, if they have health insurance, it goes right into their, their file on cannabis. And if they have to go to the hospital, we give them their medical insurance.
Oh, that's good.
So we was always proud of them for trying to do that, but I was, nobody has said anything yet.
I like it.
Nobody, nobody has said anything yet.
It's saving us money.
But we, we've actually gotten back. Yeah, five thousand, five fifty-five, five twenty-three on just copays. And plus, what we've gotten back that, um, Southern Health has got us back, that filed was thirty-two, six fifty-nine, is that right, Connie? Thirty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars, just, you know, where they went after these, doctors and hospitals and stuff, that they sent us checks for, for credits.
We, EMS finally did get paid for it.
I didn't know she'd sent you all an email.
No, she didn't. They used to, we don't know about it, so.
Yeah, we, we had to take them to the hospital the other day over that. Definitely, when that came with the outcome. Started doing backflips.
Yeah. So y'all know, y'all know what happened back in the day, don't you? I mean.
What's that?
They, you know, it was always said that if the animal service does something for the jail, they don't charge for it. But one of the things was, was how's he gonna be responsible for a budget if he's doing free?
According to the law, that has to be accounted for.
Yeah, you know, that he's got, he's doing free runs, but, you know, and it was always said, you know, you don't pay back and forth. And he come out and said, man, there's, I got a twenty-seven thousand dollar bill over here, and I'm like, let me see what I can do. And they paid part of it, and then they finished paying the rest of it, I guess. Of course, I spent going on for two years.
Yeah, the grand scheme of things, it, it.
To go on for two years.
Because it, it goes, you know, it goes right back into the general fund, and most everything that comes out is from the general fund, so, yeah, it helps, it helps out a lot.
You know, it's just like medical, I'm gonna bring this up because it's on my mind. If we have any work releasing inmates that get hurt, like if we have Wolf County, Wolf County paid the doctor bill because they was out there working for them.
This is the one I stepped on, but.
This is bringing me up to my next one. We had one stepped on, he was in a compacter jumping up and down. It was, now, this is what I'm told, there's one person up there, Doran Bush, and he was in the weigh station. And there's five inmates up there. Can't have them. Nobody was watching the guy. And, and I'm, again, this is secondhand information, might not be the truth, couldn't tell you if it is or not. I've not done nothing to look into it, but we can't have five guys up there just one guy watching them.
Spanning control.
It'll get, it'll get biased. And plus, in the way it's watching him, they could've said, hey, that's a safety issue, why don't you get down in there?
Yeah, we, one of the things we need to look at also is, is, what was it, last year, we, we agreed to let Darryl put more cameras up there? And he was supposed to have, uh, been able to fix it where we had the judge's office can watch out there, and then also where you all can watch, and that's not been done yet.
So he's got cameras up there, is what I'm told, and plus he puts some up at the, at the animal.
Was wifi the issue?
Yeah, wifi was the issue at the time because nobody knew what it was up there. And I think they had southeastern bail or something, but we was paying.
Eastern telephone.
Yeah, southeastern telephone, but they was paying for AT&amp;T. And nobody could say where it was at, or what to even get into it. And I think that's where we was at on, at that time. But I think now he's got a couple new cameras up there, maybe, I might be mistaken, but I do know he's put some up at the dog pen.
Yeah, we, we ran into the problem last year of, and, and we didn't know where the lines was going or anything like that, so.
So, so we was paying for a hundred megabytes per month internet. It's like, I forget what it was, a hundred and seventy-eight dollars a month. And it was pretty much, well, we've got TVs on internet, we've got all the computers on internet, we've got the shirts on internet, it was pretty much that's maxed out. And I called the AT&amp;T and asked them about going up to two hundred megabytes, what it would cost. And they said, well, it's, it's the same price if you take it up to two. I'm like, oh hell, what about if they take it up to three? They're like, oh, it's the same price. So that might be something to look into, but I haven't changed the jails up to three hundred.
He can create y'all an account, we have the transfer station in Washington today.
Well, see, they, they, they supposed to put it on ours, so that way that we, we can watch and, and they'll, y'all have it over there?
No. We, we do it, we do for the jail, but.
Well, I'm talking about.
We have it, if he, he can make you an account.
Oh, I wish we did.
There's that eastern general?
No, no, well, Darryl broke it, we have it in here on the smart board. We do the parks, the transfer station, city parks, and, and the red light cameras.
We'd be able to take a look back for a while, see what cameras it is and.
Hey, you got the box, you go for mine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've got it all.
Because y'all seen the hall we got them down there the other day, Adrian's seen it all. We got nunchucks and guns and knives and.
All the guns was baby gun.
Baby gun, yeah, baby gun.
Last, uh, year before last, it was real guns.
Yeah, oh, well, we're, yeah. I, I don't, I don't know if the, I don't know if they made jokes or not, but I went down and talked to them.
They did. And I told them, I'm like, those kind of guys, if it happens again, I'm sure they'll probably do that.
Yeah, you know, no doubt regarding the other, the thing about it is, and, and, you know, they're saving us a lot of money as far as hiring employees and stuff like that. So that's the reason why that's that, you know, last month, month before last, you know, we agreed to, to every so often buy them a good lunch.
And they appreciate it.
And, and all that.
They pump it.
And, and, you know, we want to, well, we appreciate that too, but if they, you know, like I told them, I said, I said, you know, if I was you, just as soon as I come in the mornings, I'll do a walk around and make sure there's no contraband or anything there. If there is, you know, you go over and you tell somebody that, hey, this is over here, we don't want it here. I said, you do that, we're fine. I said, but if they come up here and they find contraband, you know, that's all of you, it's just not one, it's everybody. And I said, everybody's gonna be affected, and I said, if we have to, we'll take away whatever we need to, to do, so. And they are very appreciative, they, they are.
They, they are, they've, uh, they're, they do a lot of work. Of course, you know, they, they help dog pound and county and tourism and, uh, they just enjoy getting out and doing it. And most of them's great guys. I mean, really, we never have hardly any problem with, with any state inmates at all. And the only problem, the only problems we ever have with county is somebody that comes in high, of course, we'll try to make sure everybody understands, hey, they don't know what they're doing, so ain't no reason to be hateful to them or to talk down to them. But a lot of them, you know, I mean, once they suffer up there, like, man, I don't even remember nothing. And of course, you, you get what you put into it. You treat people with respect, you get respect, you don't, you don't get respect, so.
And all of them do a good job.
Yeah, they, they, they really appreciate it.
Well, we are too, you know, it goes two-way street there, they, they, you know, can't say enough good about them, but they do, they do do a good job. People just make mistakes sometimes, and that's where we're at the bank board, and then we go from there.
So, so when we have the budget meeting, sorry to go, yeah, correction, so when we have the budget meeting, who else wanna be there? Is, oh, the niceties gonna be there, or is just gonna be?
Well, if, if we, if we have more, more than two, then we'll have to call a special meeting. We know that that forms a quorum, but.
Which would be fine.
Yeah, but I have no problem with that, you know, as long as everybody else don't have a problem with it. But it's, it, you know, it, it's, it's better for everybody to come up and they have to say so about what we're doing, how we're doing it, stuff, you know, because, you know, five or six heads is a lot better than, than one.
Amen.
Talk about my head, man.
Amen. So, you know, a guy asked me one time, it was my boss at my other job, and he said, about looking at your watch, does it have numbers or marks on it? And I couldn't tell him, because you get complacent and you don't see stuff. And that was, that was a big lesson to me, couldn't think of a head, because you look at it, I mean, who looks at their watch every day? How many times?
We're a team here too. You know, that's, that's the thing, everybody working together, making sure that, uh, we do the best for, for our community and stuff. And then certain date is good for y'all, like next week to, to do and match.
We have, what was for you all, where y'all can get them?
And, and the thing, you know, uh, if you wanna do it in the evening or something like that, because I know, I know some of you works and stuff like that.
Everything's evening, but that's back on the rack.
Let's do evening then, because we, uh, we were looking at the calendar earlier today, and we were trying to squeeze in an appointment, and it's pretty full, so evening is better for us too.
And if we, if we could do it, you know, one of the things that, kind of, then at six o'clock in the morning, and she leaves at four thirty, five o'clock in the afternoon, and, you know, we don't wanna pepper her out all night, but.
Thursdays she goes on earlier, right?
No, I clean on Thursdays.
What?
I clean on Thursdays.
Maybe, maybe we can, either some, some way, what time do you get up?
Next week at the evening, the only time.
I'm gonna be about two forty-five. You know, do some work around four o'clock?
Yeah, next week, ninety, nah, I'm, I'm late, rest week, I'm fine next week.
How about Tuesday?
That court, courthouse, does anybody need to worry about it? No, I think, I think we'd be good. What about Mike? I mean, will he have to be at the courthouse if it happens, Court?
Yeah, they usually, they don't have it after four o'clock. We, we.
Not district.
Is it our, you four o'clock? You wanna do it Tuesday, four o'clock, that everybody, everybody be? They'll be on the fifth?
Yeah.
Uh, I talked to a fencing contractor the other day. If you all remember, you all approved the, the first quote I got from that fella. He was gonna put us more razor wire up in places that needed it. And then his wife got sick and he kind of retired, so it's been a headache trying to find somebody that even deals, that will touch razor wire. So they're supposed to get back up with us, and when they come out and give us a quote, I'll bring it up, I'll let you all know at the next meeting.
That stuff scares me, just walking around.
Oh, yeah, it's no joke.
Somebody asked me the other day why we got no wire on bottom of the fence.
Yeah, so that's dangerous.
It's dangerous.
It only affects the.
Does any of the magistrates have anything else to add on, on the jail, any questions, anything like that?
Uh, it's approved very recently, on top of the magistrate's team.
Thank you, thank you.
I've got a pretty good group over there, Leo, Captain Drake there, and a few others.
Well, I just think it's neat that we're all open and discuss stuff.
Oh, I like to be completely transparent, I did, because if you come in not knowing, you don't make a good educated answer.
That's what's over there, buddy, everything.
I learn something from everybody, I screw up everybody, but I try not to do it twice over the same thing.
Now, when the fella put on Facebook last night, and I shared it without reading it too good about us being in the black, and I told him, uh, take that out of there. We're not in the black, we're over budget, so, you know.
That's, that's all right, you know, it, I, that's positive, positive, uh, feedback, you know?
I try my best not to argue with the Facebook warriors.
No, you can't, you can't win.
Oh, I want to sign. I feel if you're patient enough, life will stick a gink in their ass.
People just don't, people just, just not know what they're talking about.
That's the reason why we don't have that. That's the reason why we don't have that.
All right, anybody got anything else?
Patience goes a long ways, I'm sure.
Yeah, there you go. All right, if, if nothing else is, uh, any questions or anything like that? Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Do we need approval at meeting, or is it gonna be a meeting, or?
Well, depending, depending on, is, if, if, um, everybody gonna be there?
I'm gonna try, yeah, be safe, I just call it a special meeting.
We'll go ahead and, yeah, we'll call it a special meeting, uh, three, five, twenty-four, four o'clock. Most of the adjournments.
Who's bringing supper?
Yes, huh?
Who's bringing supper?
I'll cook.
Okay.
You don't want shrimp bowl?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Hang on, just a second, before we do that.
Got butter y'all up?
Who paying for it?
You just come and eat.
Most maybe, but in a second by ten, all favor, signify by saying aye. Anybody vote likewise? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.